Okay, we'll call this regular meeting of the city council to order at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March the 13th, daylight savings time. That's why it's light outside. Please make sure that your cell phones are in the off position before we start. And I will offer the invocation to begin with, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Walt Kanek. And you may stand if you wish. Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day. We thank you for this beautiful creation that you've given us. We ask for your peace and your wisdom, for you said, "If we lack wisdom, we should ask it of God." We give you the glory, Lord, for all of these circumstances, Lord, we find ourselves in, and the privilege to be able to meet together in freedom and decide the outcome of these agenda items. We ask that you lead us and guide us, and let us be your light, and let rivers of living waters flow from our innermost beings to honor you and glorify you, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And item number one is announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunias.
We just started, we have a couple of announcements tonight, a couple of quick ones. We're pointing this thing in the right direction. There we go. Sign up is now underway for the Parks and Recreation Apartments Adult Spring Softball League, which can be taken on the 23rd. This is a co-able league, and the fee is $275 per team, and it's due by April 12th. Teams can consist of as many as 14 players, and games will be played at Singing Winds Fields on Monday and Wednesday nights. This league is designed for 18 years older, but 16 and 17-year-olds can play too with a parent waiver.
Yes.
Do we have any signups?
Yeah.
Quite a few. Good. Good. Let's get some of those teams in. This will be a bundle. If you need more information, contact Josh Rodriguez at Parks and Recreation. Also, a reminder, this is a great summer job for area kids. We are now accepting applications for lifeguard employment at the Olympic Pool this summer. Applicants must be at least 15 years old and be able to work regularly from late May through August. You do not need to have current certification. Training will be provided. Training course will be held April 6th to 8th. It seems like a long way off, and it's really only about two, three weeks, so not very far. Starting rate's $10 per hour for lifeguards. Now, there's also positions available for cashier and management. And again, contact Parks and Recreation Park if you have any questions about that.
Ashley, I do have a question. We talked about adults being able to, when we were studying for the Aquatic Center, being able to be lifeguards as well. And there were several people. There's no age limitation on that end, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We actually already have a couple of applications for non-teens.
Non-teens. That was very tactile.
All right. And one last announcement. If you're aboard Saturday night, come on down to Louise Hayes Park, Return the Water Green, for St. Patrick's Day. If you're looking forward to it, I think it'll be really pretty. You might have a great beer before you come down, so you can enjoy it even more. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Any other announcements?
I have one. It's a little bit lengthy, but nonetheless. Vincent Lockley is out sick today, that's why he's not here, but I kind of wanted to give a shout out to him for the many efforts he's been kind of going through while he's been up here. He's not currently running for office, so it's not a campaign plug, which I realize would be a little inappropriate from up here anyways, but he's been, he's been community building in a largely unnoticed way, kind of behind the scenes doing things. And he doesn't know I'm doing it, so it's probably better that he's out sick, because he wouldn't be as embarrassed. But he's been, he's been speaking for a lot of the underrepresented, and some examples are, as soon as he got on council, he pushed pretty strongly for saving the soccer fields, which a lot of people were trying, but a lot of people had also given up hope on that. And by saving the fields, we averted sort of a PR disaster that might have occurred, because the sports complex had some delays in opening, and without it, we would have had trouble playing. Without being asked, he noticed the backboards, basketball goals at the Carver Park had sort of become dilapidated, and he got those replaced. And he, he's kind of been a de facto, I'm calling it that, de facto council liaison for the community guard, and he's been kind of plugging that as another community building aspect to that. And then, before any discussions on the comprehensive plan that have highlighted this issue of our river being sort of a wall between north and south, you know, we need to kind of break through that. He actually prevented us from destroying a footbridge unnecessarily, that, you know, quite literally was bridging the gap between north and south across the river. And he championed, we're going to discuss it a little bit tonight, but he sort of championed the establishment of the downtown farmer's market, which, again, sort of infused some vitality into the downtown. A lot of people say we need it. Hardly anybody does much with it. And there he was. So, and he's kind of becoming an events promoter for Kerrville, and behind the scenes looking again for, again, people talk about, "Oh, we need more things for youth." Well, a lot of people say it, he's actually out there doing something with it. And, you know, he deserves some credit with it. There's some things that he's doing. He's, he's looking at reviving, really, we didn't even know it was a revival, but Hispanic Heritage Festival here in town. He's, he's looking at the, what do you call it? The music, Bring Music Events to Louise Hayes Park. And then, you've got to ask him about this last one, because it'll bring a smile to his face. Ask him, "What's a silent disco?", and he'll probably tell you about that. So, anyways, he didn't, like I said, he didn't know I was going to do this, and he'd probably be embarrassed if I did, but if you get a chance, just thank him for his efforts. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any others from the audience? If not, item number two is the visitors' and citizens' forum. Ms. Bradshaw.
Sorry, the button, the pointer's getting off, so it's wondering if you can get it on here. I don't know, he's texting me from the back. I don't know if he could tell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rose Bradshaw. I'm the City Liaison Representative of Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, Owen Hyde. I apologize that I have not come sooner to apprise you of what we have done and have been doing. In 2017, the KCP AAA ended up with 94 members, lots of volunteers to help our police department. We participated in many events side by side with our local men and women in blue, and with the support and assistance that wherever they needed. We had events like Drug Take Back Event, which handled 290 pounds of drugs, which was greatly safe from going to our landfills and into our water system. The National Night Out in October provides citizens of Kerrville the opportunity to meet representatives from our cities, finest, our fire department, our police, and our emergency medical services. Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association members also made dozens of cookies for Valentine's for our police department. I think it was a little bit of a change in doughnut. Meeting people know us from the Blue Santa Project, an event that happened here at Bonnie Box RV. This year, we had a total of 343 children that were adults, along with many children from the goal center, as well as the K-Star program. We wouldn't have been able to do it without several people in our community, one, two of which are the Elks Lodge 2081 and the Kerrville Rotary Lodge, which also helped us with food to give the family, and our mayor's program of Young Women that came up to help us. The association joined the Purple Hearts Group to provide made-to-order breakfast for, to our residents, veterans, and the Veterans Administration at the VA Hospital, and it's done on a quarterly basis. If anybody would like to volunteer, we definitely would take you. We meet up there at 6:00 AM and give the veterans the well-reserved homemade breakfast. The Citizens Patrol Program is continually training the members with the assistance has proven to be a valuable resource in discouraging violations of the handicap parking that is in great need for many of in our community. After certification and training, these volunteers can write tickets for violators. The Kerrville Citizens Academy Class 21 was completed in 2017. From there, we've acquired many more volunteers to help us out. The spring class is currently going on. We request, we had a request to build a picnic table at the police department, but again, one of our local businesses stepped up. We went out to the Home Depot, no questions asked, they gave us a picnic table to provide the police department. Last year, we were downsizing some of the things we had stored away. We had a hot dog cart that was not being utilized, and we found a worthy contributor, Los Angeles Children's Church Fellowship Christian Athlete, which is a Tybee High School youth program known as SWAG, was very happy to take over that hot dog cart. We also had a large donation from one of our members to, in memory of her late husband, to help us purchase AEDs for our police department. At that time, we were able to purchase 10, and are currently writing grants and trying to purchase the rest of them for the police department. The association also was given by another member the funds to buy a golf cart, which will greatly help patrol the River Trail and help our police department and our emergency medical people during events like the Fourth of July, and even on a daily event, when people walking down there and maybe having an injury. Supporting our police has always been our biggest goal. We have provided the police department with drippings and wristbands, and now we have a nice little looking little car, and I forgot to bring one, that has the non-emergency number on there, so people would not utilize the 911 number and be able to get their help quickly. Many of our members attended the Law Enforcement and Training Convention, which is a big honor for us, because with the help of our late President Bill Cafferty, we were able, we are the only association in Texas that has won every award that is fair. Members of the board meet with the chief on a regular basis to keep our thoughts and seek other possible avenues and volunteers' assistance that we can do for the department. Our ongoing project with the chief has been the history of Kerrville Police Department. Many of the handwritten documents in the city council minutes have information related to KTV or its predecessor organizations and officials.
Rose, excuse me, just one moment. Just for formality, I'd like for you to keep going. We did expire four minutes, but with council consensus, we'd like, would you like to hear? Yes, so just for formality.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's fine.
The committee will be interviewing citizens for the firsthand information. We anticipate this project will take about two years. They're presently working on the 1970s, since in 1987 it was computerized. One of the, the nice little slips that was discovered was that there was a city marshal, and it was in 1980, no, 1889, when it was formed. The marshal was then paid $25 a month. JP Bright became the first marshal on April 19, 1890. The city marshal later evolved into the police department. So, I don't think our chief would take $25 a month. To wrap it up, the Kerrville Citizens Police Alumni Association is very active with our police, and we do back them in everything they do. Do check out our website and our newsletter. We have ongoing projects that we do all year long. Thank you, Ian, for allowing me to apprise you of what we've done in 2017.
And Rose, thank you so much for coming and giving the report. You're an excellent liaison member for us. You've had your hand right in this, because I know I'm part of the Alumni Association and can't go, because you're missing the meeting on the Tuesday night. But when you had it on Wednesday, I went, and you've done a fine job, and all of them have. Thank you for what you do for our parades and Fourth of July and all of our special events. It's a great organization.
Can I ask one question? She said something about buying AEDs. What's an AED?
It's an automatic external capability.
Oh, okay.
That we use for the.
I'm glad you asked. I'm supposed to know that. Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other speakers on here to speak at the moment. Item number three A is a proclamation declaring March the 2018 as American Red Cross Month.
Excuse me, ma'am. My home has still allowed a phone to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it just lit up. I don't have it on there, but you may speak. Is it not on an agenda item topic?
I think I just put open forum. I'm not too sure if I.
I thought it was under the, our next item.
Oh, no, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You wanted to decide.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I just came up here to say thank you for supporting the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. It has been a true blessing for our son. We went to the Youth Advisory Council Summit in Cedar Hill a couple of weeks ago, and I know not many students were able to go, but I wanted to thank you for that. That's my main reason for coming here, and to ask that you consider a small budget for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council to continue their leadership growth through conferences and summits such as that one that he had an opportunity to attend. And one of the things that I would like to make a suggestion to the council and city staff, Cedar Hill does an incredible, incredible job by involving all city staff to be part of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And each staff has two to three students that they mentor, just to teach them some things about city government, help them with college applications, show them around city organizations, committees that they may not be aware of, so that we do have leaders ready to step in when we need them here for our city. So I just wanted to make that suggestion to the council and you, Mayor, as you lead this council. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for being the sponsor. Thank you, Roman. I saw it when it was advertised, and I said, "This would be great for our youth council." We offered it to the officers with Mr. McDaniel's approval, and only one could make it, but I knew it would be beneficial to the group. Now, we'll move to three A. Jacques, if you will join me.
George, Daniel, just leave that on. That's what it's like. Say, "Thank you."
So, this was brought to our attention by Jacques Dubois, who leads the local chapter of the American Red Cross. And I was at the breakfast that we had for the heroes recently, and he told us that we have a particular reason to remember them this particular month. So I will read this proclamation before you today. Whereas for more than 100 years, the American Red Cross of the Texas Hill Country has been the place where citizens join together and are always willing to take care of others in situations from home fires and windstorms to flooding and man-made disasters. And whereas the Red Cross is dedicated to training our community in CPR, first aid, disaster preparedness, and other life-saving skills. And whereas the Red Cross is a volunteer-led organization that relies on the generosity of the American people, now therefore I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do urge all residents of Kerr County to volunteer their time and give generously to the American Red Cross and its local office, and do hereby proclaim March 2018 as American Red Cross Month. And on behalf, Jacques, of our entire council and staff and the citizens of Kerrville and Kerr County, we thank you so much for what you do, and we thank you that we can know you'll always be there in case we have a disaster. So let's give them a round of applause for what they do for Kerr County. [applause]
Well, I just want to thank the citizens and the partnership we have with the city and the county. We opened four, we opened six shelters throughout the Hill Country. We had two in Kerrville during Harvey, and the partnership and the volunteers that came out from Serteam with the fire department, with the EMs, it was amazing that we're able to take care of so many people that were, you know, some were evacuated by themselves, others were mandatory evacuated. And we're point-to-point for San Patricio County, so if you, if you live there, you're going to come to Kerrville. So we got the shelters up, we had a lot of people in there, a lot of donations, and we have a great partnership with the city. We appreciate it. We are looking for more volunteers. We want to grow our board as well. If you're looking to serve on a board that's doing some great things, making a difference, saving lives, contact us. And March 28th is Giving Day for the Red Cross. So if you have more questions for us, just come over and see us at our office at 333 Earl Garrett. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jacques. Can you eat it?
No, not this time. Next time I'll bring you some.
I think you did like it.
I did.
You did.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Where's that? I wasn't on council.
[laughing]
All right, thank you very much. Item number three B is report from the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. We have the chairman of the group, Roman Garcia, here to present this evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Like she said, my name is Roman Garcia, and I'm the chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Before I start the report, I just want to thank City Council for, again, appointing me as my second term. This has been a very beneficial term, again, doing more projects. So go ahead and jump right in. So to some of the public, if you're wondering, what is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council? Well, we are a group of 15 students, high school students. We go public school, homeschool, private school, public school from Kerr County, and we serve a term of one school year. Here's a picture. Unfortunately, we have two members that are not pictured, Zinjun Lee and Sidney Garcia. However, if we can get Zinjun, he's here. If you want to stand up, you can get recognized.
Great members.
So now that you've seen the council, you're probably wondering, "What do we do?" Well, we provide a youth perspective on the various community affairs and issues going on to the mayor and city leadership. We develop the youth leaders committed to learning about our local government, empower the youth to become the members, active members in their community by participating in volunteerism and community events. We meet regularly on the second Thursday of each month at 4:30 here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room. We've had 10 meetings so far. If you're wondering, you see some special meetings in there, what we've tried to do is save some of our regular meetings for actions, items that we want to take, and then our special meetings for tours and stuff like that, extra activities that we want to do. Council officer meetings, I meet with the secretary and the vice chair on a kind of regular basis, about once to twice a month, where you get meet this month. So just to give you a little insight on that, we do meet going over the agenda, what we figured out, how the meeting went before, what we can do to improve, what kind of projects we think we can move forward with, what we think we can do differently. Tours and guest speakers during our meetings, like I told you for our special meetings, we take tours, and we have some guest speakers that come into our meetings, too. We have a committee for that, and the reason is, it's good, because it kind of spreads some leadership throughout the council, and through that committee, they go and find who, people throughout the community who want to come and speak to us from a youthful perspective, and they try to schedule tours. The chair of that committee is Trey Layton, Caleb McCutcheon is a member, Mason Roberts, Zinjun Lee, and myself. Some tours that we have taken this month include the Kerrville Municipal Airport, Kerr County Courthouse, and some speakers. We've had Dalton Reed, who is a student body, student body, Shrinay University President, Peggy Schmidt, who is the chair of Caring for America, Tom Whiting, who is the president of the Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, Tina Woods, who is the executive director of the Deirdre Center, Ms. Boyle, who is here today, she's the city's director of Parks and Recreation, and we've had three members from the Hill Country Chapter of Military Order of World Wars, Paul Zollin, Fred Vogt, and Norm Wells. Here are some pictures, two of the tours that we've taken, and some pictures of the guest speakers at the meetings. I'll try to get a picture with all of our guest speakers, that way we can have it for the record. Our projects and events, we also have a committee for this. They go, like the tours and guest speakers, go out and research events that are going out throughout the city that we can participate in. Sidney Garcia is the chair of that committee. Jessica Tran, Maria Hall, and myself are all members of that committee. Maria Hall is the vice chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. And some projects we participate in, this one is actually before our initial meeting, it was the UGRA River Cleanup on July 22nd. We participated in the Kerrville Holiday Light Parade by decorating a fire truck for the Ingram Volunteer Fire Department. We weren't able to ride it, because we didn't have enough members that would be able to do it that day, so we decided that we'd go ahead and just decorate the fire truck for them, and they rode that through the parade. The Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee Community Retreat, it's a long one, on November 18th, we had a member and I go to that event, and I'm pretty sure most of the, I think all the council members were there, that was a pretty good event. We gave our input, what we'd like to see Kerrville be in the future. The Ingram Christmas Parade, now, because we weren't able to do the Kerrville one, this date worked out better for most of the members, so they participated in that one on December 2nd. The Blue Santa Program on December 9th. Reef Across America on December 16th. The Gingerbread House Event, which was on the same day. Luckily, there were later times, we had some council members go to that one as well. That was at the library. A National Salute to Veterans Patients, February 14th. The Texas Youth Advisory Commission Summit, which I went to, which was from February 16th to the 18th. The, and then we are doing, one of the projects that we've done is the youth community survey, where we put a survey out to the youth. We got a link going out to the students, and they're sharing it through like social media or whatever, and asking them, "What are your input on Kerrville, and how can it be improved?" And we're hoping to show that to the city leadership soon, possibly the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, because they're looking at the long-term vision for Kerrville. Here are some pictures of things we did. This is of the river cleanup. This is a picture of me at the community retreat. The other member left her, so we didn't get a picture of her. The Ingram Christmas Parade that they participated in, and then they made a little banner there you can see hanging down, the green. Oh, and the mayor was there, too. She got to participate in that, riding the fire truck, too.
That was interesting.
Here, it really was. And then we also had a meeting with the consulting firm with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which is good. We gave them our input, too, so hopefully they'll be using that in the long-term vision. This is a picture of the Reef Across America project. This is a picture at the Gingerbread House Event, but holds us more of library.
They did great.
Yes, they did.
I was watching.
This is one of the pictures we got from the Veterans Patients, which Ms. Summerlin was also there at, too. She was in our group, participated with us. And then two pictures of the Youth Advisory Commission Summit that I went to in Cedar Hill. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions or any comments that you have now.
Sir Roman, you've done a fine job, and all the council, I've really enjoyed working with them, and I asked that they would do this little presentation to let you know that we're working towards transitioning these young people. I think they've done a fine job. Several of them are on the debate, what is it called, the legal thing, the?
Mock trial.
Help me out.
Mock trial. Yes, ma'am.
We have, Zinjun is on that, and they've done well. So we have a very good representation. Roman happens to homeschool, his parents are here today, tonight, and we have representatives from Tybee High School and OLH, and it's a really great group of kids.
It's going to be, it's Garcia in 2034.
For governor? Yeah, looking at that.
That's the number we set aside, right?
Right. Ms. Summerlin, did you?
Could we hear some more about this survey? What, is it a, is it a long survey, short survey, using Survey Monkey or something else?
It's about a 10-question survey that we use through Google Forms, and it's basically asking, you know, "What do you think we should get rid of Kerrville? What do you think there's less of? What do you think there's too much of?" And then we ask, we have some fill-ins where they can specifically write their own comments. And to be honest with you, we've had some paragraph comments that say, you know, "We need to do all this." So it's really good, and it gets them a voice that they can speak anonymously.
Can anybody access it on Google Forms, or do you have to have a password?
No, ma'am.
How do you get that out?
It has to be shared directly to that individual to be able to access it.
Okay.
So it just not anybody can go on and do it.
Like an old person couldn't do it.
Couldn't do it.
Right.
Go look at it.
Exactly. We've made sure.
But you just, like, how did you pick the participants?
Basically, just anybody we knew, friends. We put it out there through social media, and then we asked them to share it. So, you know, you share it with your friends, so you know, you know the people who are taking it.
Yeah.
And then we just asked them to share it. And we've actually, if you saw, we did from January to February.
Right.
And then from February to March, again, because we got about 300 responses from BT Wilson alone. And I called and asked. And I called and asked if the teacher had put out an assignment for the students, and one of them said they did.
Oh.
And so they said, you know, we really should focus on Tybee, O L H, and homeschool students, since that's who we're representing. So it's like, let's put it out again and see the responses we get. So we're doing it again, and hopefully get more responses from our schools.
Very interesting.
We basically took the NCS survey that we had mailed out to the community and modified it to non, well, teenager group this time, Ashley. And, uh, we, we hoped that they could take it either physically or social media to their student councils or their different groups that they're members of, and see what we could get back. And they did a good job. We just didn't get a big cross-section, but we'll keep going.
Right. And hopefully we'll be coming back with a brief report on what those were, the responses from that.
Sure, that'll be interesting.
I saw a picture earlier, and that's a lot of trash they picked up.
Oh, yeah, we got about five.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think we found a bathtub or something, didn't we? Very good. Any other questions or comments by council? Very good job.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for coming and being supportive.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, item number four A is the minutes of, um, consent agenda to approve minutes of regular city council meeting. And, uh, council, it would be, as Ms. Craig made amendments, uh, for only the year 2018 as to 2017. So do I have a motion?
Can, can I pull it off? Uh, it's not to modify the minutes. I just would like to talk about minutes. If, is that something I can do?
Okay, yes. Uh-huh. So we will open up a discussion of the minutes.
I just, the, really, the only point is, and I understand, I think, the logic behind having them sort of trimmed down, um, because we got the video of the minutes. But, um, it's more of a question to if I'm the only one that cares about such things. But when, when I do searches for, um, uh, anything in Kerrville, and if our minutes are trimmed down like that, we don't get the ability to search on phrases that might have been spoken by a person who was speaking. Uh, we only get, we're only able to search off the, um, agenda items themselves, uh, you know, the agenda bill stuff. And I, for me, when I do lookups, that's, that's a factor. Um, the other is when we have, uh, sort of a split vote, say, uh, three to two, there's really, the way we're doing minutes now, the way we've kind of gone to, we're not, there's no real explanation for why people voted that way at all, whereas before, when we had just a little blurb about why, um, it's a little helpful. Again, I understand the videos there, so if, if I'm the only one that, you know, it matters to, then so be it. Um, I would just then, I guess periodically, I'll just say, I'd like to see these quotes put back in a minute, but I'm just wondering if anybody else had a concern at all.
Is it, are these types of things covered in the conversation part?
Generally, yeah, like the, the format we've done, I guess it's the last couple of months, maybe, but, um, certainly since the beginning of Granicus. Uh, it'll say something like consent, uh, council discussed, and it'll list a few things. Yeah, but it doesn't say who said it, or it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't.
The trouble with doing that is it, it's hard to be perfectly objective without a verbatim. And so somebody could always criticize, you know, you, you emphasize what George said, but not what I said.
So is the alternative not?
This way, you, you avoid that problem, and anybody who really wants to know who said exactly what can go straight to the tape.
Okay, and, and that would be okay, but at the same time, I'd, like, my concern was I don't want to look like a, a bad person. I was gonna say jerk. That's the word. I don't want to look like a jerk if, while the, say, we have minutes that I feel like the phrase that was said, it was really said, can they be added to the minutes, and is everybody going to be annoyed by that getting asked periodically? I guess that's my, because I don't, I don't mind doing it that way.
I guess they can vote, vote on it as an amendment to the minutes as it comes along.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. I'm just, that's the only reason I was asking.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, if you want to add, add that for a comment.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, that having been said, we do have, as I mentioned, an amendment, uh, only for the year, on the minutes that are offered. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion in a second.
I'm not getting my.
I'm not getting it either.
My, uh, vote thing. Let's, let me go back and make sure.
Are we running, we're running the real game here on.
That's why I had it open when I opened my, there.
Well, I've joined the meeting, I thought. Go back here. Hmm? Believe it. Enjoy. Do what? I was connected once before. What happened to it?
Charlie, can I redo the vote?
I still don't have it.
Okay, she's gonna redo.
I did. I got it.
So, I, Charlie? I still don't get the.
The vote window.
The vote window.
Maybe just do by hand for this one, and then reset for the next one.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand.
All right. Just raise your hand.
Well, I, I am in favor of approving the minutes.
I did, but she's still. Now, now we know how that side of the dais has been voting this whole time. She's like kicking it. That's a vote of yes.
Don't be mistaken. We all have a choice. Okay, we, we voted to approve that, I believe unanimously. Okay, four to zero.
Who knew he would mind me?
And now we're ready to go to item number five A. Don't say we're not entertaining here. Item number five A is ordinance number two oh one eight dash oh seven, amending chapter seventy-four Parks and Recreation, Article One, Rules and Regulations for City Park and Recreation Areas of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending various sections to address the operation and use of the Kerrville Sports Complex containing a cumulative savings and severability clause, providing penalty, providing other matters relating to the subject. Ms. Boyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Councilmember Summerlin, for warming them up for me. That comment, I appreciate that. Um, again, this is the first reading of this ordinance. We did a little bit of cleanup on, um, this chapter, and we added some specific language appropriate for our new sports complex. And to develop these regulations, we researched other similar complexes. Uh, we met with some stakeholders. The soccer organizations had some feedback. We met with DBAT, um, and we also worked with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, the Parks Board actually unanimously voted on this draft and approved it last week at their meeting on March 9th. And this is the recommended language that we have. Um, we recommend, um, having language, um, considering the facility by a reservation use only, essentially not allowing it to be open to the general public for people to walk on the play. This is a reservation facility. And prohibit the sale, use, and consumption, possession of alcohol.
I'm sorry, Asha, that's for both sides?
Correct. Um, uh, prohibit alcohol, um, on both sides. No pets, except for those trained to assist a person with a disability. Prohibit abusive, vulgar, threatening, or disruptive language or behavior. Prohibit artificial noise makers. These would be air horns, whistles, clappers, cowbells. Um, prohibit drones, uh, generators, grills, unless they receive approval from the director. Um, prohibit skateboard, scooters, rollerblades, and skates, and prohibit bikes anywhere other than improved surfaces.
Where's drones?
It's on the third bullet.
No, it's in the.
Three, four, five, sixth bullet. One, two, three, four, five. I don't have it in mind.
The third one, from the bottom, I'm sorry.
I don't have it in our minutes. Do you, in the manner?
Yes, it's number seven. Using or operating a drone, this is under B, the following activity at KFC. And then there's.
I don't have that in my.
You're looking at the ordinance?
My paper one.
It is in.
This is all.
It's, um, section seventy-four twenty-three B, the very last one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, it's following the ordinance written as it is. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering about drones, so it's in there. We just didn't have it in the preface here.
And those are the recommendations, and staff recommends approval of the.
Who's the director?
I am.
Okay.
Um, approval as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions. May I help?
I don't have any speaker request form. Does anybody on council have?
I have some questions. Um, you know, it wouldn't be a council meeting if George Rudy didn't have some questions, right? So seventy-four five B, if we say the park is open to the public from dawn to ten P M., eleven P M. on Friday, Saturday, are we obligating DBAT to have somebody manned there all that time, or how does that work?
No, we, we don't. Their contract states that they can set their own operating hours, which we will allow them to do so.
So, um, so it's not technically open that late? It's, it's, if you reserve it and they say yes, then you can.
Correct. It'd be typically open that late for a rental or a tournament.
Okay. Um, and then is, is there a reason, like, engage in abusive, vulgar, all that kind of language? Why is that specific to the sports complex and not just, like, parks?
That's some, that's a good question. That's a good point that we maybe can go back and amend as well. Um, that's just something that, you know, we ran into this last night at our flag football game. We had an altercation to, there, too. Um, adult sports, you see things like this happen, so we just want to be able to protect the staff and protect the officials there as well.
Um, and then, um, the noisemaker ban, um, is there, like, a, a major outcry for that, or where did that come from?
That one actually is more for the soccer side. Um, the TAPS rule, which is the, um, the Texas, for the private schools, Texas periodic, periodical and private schools. They actually have a rule for that. Um, they more consider, like, um, cannons and fireworks, which we wouldn't have over there anyway, but this would fall underneath that, too, so an O L H plays under those rules.
Okay. And then, um, one is sort of a, just a, so we, we're allowing bikes to be in there only if they're on the sidewalk or the, the parking lot. Um, what's the major drawback to rollerblades? I mean, I, I guess I sort of see it on the skateboard, but what's the difference between a bike and a rollerblade as far as we can, we're concerned?
Um, essentially, we're, we're basically wanting to keep people off the fields. You know, bikes, we want to allow them to get to the facility on a bike if they so choose to. Um, and just essentially keeping them off. But typically, rollerblades, skateboards, that kind of thing, people tend to, um, typically engage in, you know, disruptive behavior when they're on those type pieces of equipment, and so we prefer them not to be at the complex.
Do we let rollerblades on the river trail?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, and then, um, one other thing was just in looking at it, I'm curious about, it has nothing to do with Kerrville Sports Complex, but can someone tell me why we disallow climbing trees in our city parks?
Sure. Um, we don't want to disrupt or harm any of the trees, first of all, and it's also a safety issue, a liability, if someone were to injure themselves or fall in the park.
Okay. Um, I'm raising that as an, as a, as an issue that maybe the citizens might want to get changed, that's all. It seemed odd to me, I mean, but, okay.
That's a pretty standard ordinance against through all cities. A lot of them have adopted that similar language.
Yeah. Well, okay, that's all the questions I have.
So the same rules would apply at parks in general, and these are just in addition to?
Yes, ma'am.
So in our, uh, we, we discussed, I think, last week in our ordinances for the park, it's no smoking or vaping.
Correct.
Okay. And I can imagine on that rollerblade thing, if you see the hill from the DBAT in the parking lot down to the ball fields, it's a pretty good little roll.
Yeah.
So that'd be kind of dangerous. Are any other questions or comments? Um, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Roman Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan Street. I just, wondering, how will the abusive language, how will that be?
Controlled?
Controlled, in this sense.
Flyswatter.
Really? I was like, what?
So?
Staff will be equipped with a flyswatter, apparently, now. No, we will, uh, we will have, some of our officials will have, um, the ability to enforce those rules, and if it becomes an issue, staff will contact PD.
They could be evicted. I imagine they could be evicted from the site.
Sounds like a, a way to head it off before it gets to fisticuffs.
Right.
You know, if it's against the rules to be calling each other names, then the referee can step in right then and say, y'all stop that or leave the park.
That does make it a lot easier for.
That's easier than if, than it escalates to, to violence, then it's harder to stop.
Right.
Sandra Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan Street. How do the citizens get involved? Because I just found out rollerblades are not allowed on the trail, and we're, many of us are on that trail with rollerblades right now. So what is the consequence of using them now, and what do we do to change that?
Okay, well, you, you just self-reported, so we're gonna need to cite her.
Change.
That's right.
I'd have to go and check to see if that's actually in our ordinance, that the rollerblades aren't on the river trail. Um, but what would we simply do? Staff would just be a staff enforcement, um, and then, I guess PD could issue a citation if it were in the ordinance itself. But, um, yeah, so rollerblades, skateboards, projectile-type pieces of equipment aren't, aren't allowed on the trail. Bicycles are okay.
So how do we, as citizens, where do we need to do to get that changed, so that we are allowed?
The question was, where, if you wanted to voice having a change, you would, you could approach, you could start with the Parks Board and get their opinion, but they've already rendered their opinion. So you'd have to come to council with a proposed change, you know, if you want to do a petition or something like that. Let me ask you, would it be, because we have walkers and we have bicycles, and I'm assuming we've had no major collisions?
We, we've had one, and it was because of a skateboard.
Okay, I bet it was skateboard. See, when we have so many things on the trail.
This, we probably shouldn't be talking about the trail, because this is about the sports complex.
Yeah, I got you. You're right.
So if we want to post an agenda to talk about that, that, we can do that.
Well, uh, let me clear, I'm looking at the code right now. It's, it's skateboard. So.
So it's not rollerblade, though?
It's a rule. It's not a. Ordinance.
I guess we're seeing that in conjunction with that rule compared to this rule, if we need to.
Okay.
So do I have a, any other comments or questions? I don't see any speaker requests. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty eighteen dash oh seven as written or proposed.
We have a motion? We have a second? Motion carries four to zero. Okay. Item number five B, ordinance number two oh one eight dash one oh, amending chapter one oh two traffic and vehicles, Article Four, Operation of Vehicles Division One generally, by adding a new section, one oh two dash one one eight, to regulate the use of handheld portable electronic devices while operating a vehicle, providing exemptions, providing affirmative offenses, providing an increasing penalty for subsequent offenses containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On February thirteenth, you heard a presentation regarding, um, the possibility of an ordinance relating to the use of portable electronic devices while driving. This was, in effect, uh, a distracted driving ordinance. The consensus of council was to support the development of an ordinance containing regulations that are more restrictive than those currently contained in state law under section five forty-five, four two five one of the Texas Transportation Code. That, that was put into effect after House Bill sixty-two passed in September, or went into effect in September of last year. The proposed ordinance provides for a complete ban on the use of portable electronic devices while operating a vehicle unless the device is used in conjunction with a hands-free device. In effect, we are proposing a hands-free ordinance. And this ordinance, uh, as proposed, accomplishes that.
That's where we ask questions? Okay, all right. Um, I, a couple of things. One, is it, is it written in there somehow that I'm allowed to dial a number or end a call? Am I allowed to do that with the thing in my hand, or no?
You can dial the number and end the call, but it has to be affixed to the vehicle.
Okay, and does affixed mean?
Hands-free.
Okay, does it mean physically affixed, or can it be sitting on, like, the console?
It can be sitting on the console, or it can be affixed to the vehicle, but it can't be in your hand. You can't be holding it and driving at the same time.
But you could touch it and speak.
Turn it on, turn it off.
Okay. And then, um, and I assume this is an enforcement situation that, why we're doing this, but what's the, I mean, is that the reason that we aren't allowed to even pick up the phone? Is it just so that it's easier for a police officer to say, I saw it in your hand, therefore it's a violation? Doesn't matter what you were doing with it?
That's one component of it. The other is that it removes it as a distraction of the vehicle, so that you're no longer, uh, divided attention, whether it's manual or cognitive, or visually, from engaging in driving. So if we keep your hands on the wheel, the safer that we're gonna be.
Okay. Um, I guess that, that part concerns me that I could conceivably give an out a five hundred dollar fine to somebody for putting their phone off the console onto the seat or something. Do they have a way, is it just the judges?
Well, they would have to be operating the device in some way, shape, or form, not simply moving it.
Well, it, it, in the number, was it number five of one oh two eighteen B five? It says just holding it is gonna make it be a violation, is it not? I mean, is that, am I reading that wrong?
Well, it.
Engage in any other use of the device while operating a vehicle to include holding the handheld portable electronic device.
But it, but it requires the use of the device, not just holding it. You have to be utilizing it.
Okay, I guess the, I mean, I could see that that's what that would mean. It seems unclear though, if there's a way to. Because it does appear to me that it's just saying if it's in your hand, that's, that's a use that's a problem. If that's the way it's being read, then I'd be okay with that. I mean, that's okay.
Just, just for the public education, there's a long written ordinance. I don't know if they have copies of it or not. But there are things that you can do. You can, according to this ordinance, pull over to the side of the road and speak on your cell phone. You can use it to report illegal activity, communicate on an emergency, or if you believe that a person's life or safety is in immediate danger. You can also use, explain the use of global positioning system under this ordinance.
If you're utilizing it, it's just another subset of what you would utilize an electronic device for. You can utilize it as a GPS device. Most other cities in their ordinances have the requirement that that GPS device be affixed in some way to your vehicle while you're utilizing it. But we all know that we have the ability to use maps and apps on phones. So it's just an identification that you can utilize it for an aid in navigation as well, as long as, again, you're not holding it in your hand.
Can have Siri on telling you five hundred feet, turn right.
We had some people around town who did a poll. It's not scientific, of course, but just for curiosity's sake. And this is something that I've received about fifty fifty comments back and forth. I don't know how everybody else has received it. Maybe a little more on the foreside. And I understand that we're looking at health, safety, and welfare. That's what's stated on page one of the ordinance. I remember in our conversation last, we couldn't accurately determine or quantify the number of accidents directly related to texting or cell phones because law enforcement is restricted from asking to see the phone if you pull someone over. Is that correct?
We couldn't, you can't quantify exactly how many of them are attributed to the use of cell phones because the distraction category is so broad. It can be anything from eating in the, in your vehicle while you're driving to utilizing the cell phone or utilizing some other electronic device. So it's extremely difficult for us to say X number of accidents are attributed directly to cell phone use or electronic device use. But we can say as a broad category, this many locally were attributed to that. Now, whether it was through texting or through cell phone use in terms of a phone call or utilizing a navigation device and looking at the phone, we can't, we can't, as law enforcement, be able to ascertain that with any degree of certainty.
So this was my, my, kind of my situation here. I don't know how it affects the other council members. It's a pretty drastic step for some people. I'm probably the worst offender in the room. But that having been said, it's, it's a matter, if it's a matter of safety and we've been getting numbers and numbers of reports of accidents due to a cell phone usage, I can imagine we needed to enact something right away. The reason it's before us tonight is because it was brought forth, I think, by Mr. Morgan a number of months ago, maybe last year, and we just simply had it on the agenda list for future items to discuss. It's only been in effect this current loss in September. So we don't have a lot of data from the state. I'm, I'm answering and I'm fielding questions is the reason why I'm belaboring this a little bit. Will it affect insurance rates at all if we change it to this type of ordinance?
It's not a moving violation. And so it doesn't, it's not affected by the point system used by DPS on driver's licensing. And whether or not it would affect insurance, I would think that it would not.
So it won't go on the driving record is what you're saying, but it, there will be a record of it. And how long before, and I mean, that was a concern I had too, is I mean, we're saying, and I don't have a problem making it a moving violation. It truly is a moving violation. I mean, you're moving and therefore you're violating, you know?
It's a moving violation in that you're in a moving vehicle.
Yeah.
But by DPS, by the DPS table of moving violations, it's not listed in there.
Yeah.
Have we pulled over, do you have any numbers? How many drivers we've maybe pulled over for texting violation? Would we have numbers on that?
We have some from previous when we were really focusing on school zones. And we have those numbers. I can provide them to you if you just go back and pull them up.
I guess the reason I'm struggling a little bit with it is because I've had people say, well, we don't want to be a nanny state and regulate every single thing that people do. But we do want to be concerned if it truly is a safety and health issue. And this is a conversation I had with the city manager. If this was something we could get feedback on, it's not like asking a poll of people, do you think it's okay to run a red light? But, but it could be put on a ballot. It could be voted on. It could be citizen-led, citizen-driven is what I'm trying to say. And I don't know what council thinks about that. I just, these are the comments that I've had from social media. The other is, well, are we gonna limit eating and drinking and the no fry rule? Smoking lipstick, makeup? I don't know. There's a lot of things.
Which all fall into that distracted category.
That's right. And I know Granbury, I read an incident where they actually said they, they, an officer followed someone weaving who was looking down. That was the sign that they were using a cell phone. And so they pulled him over for reckless driving, were able to ticket them under reckless driving. My last comment, and then I'll open it up to the floor. But I think the offense, the penalty is, I don't understand a range. On the first offense, to me, you would give a warning. On the, the second offense, I could see a hundred dollars and then maybe five hundred. But why would we go up to five hundred dollars on the very first offense? How could we determine a range of culpability, if you will, under section six? Shall have a minimum fine of a hundred and a maximum fine of five hundred. I, I don't know what would be aggravated cell phone use.
It's possible.
Possible?
It's possible.
He was holding a gun to my head. I had to make the call. No, I was just curious about the range. I can, what's a, what's a penalty for running a stop sign first offense?
I.
Do we know mine?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred?
Up to two hundred dollars, right.
Up to?
I mean, to me, that's a valid question. Is what, I mean, what guidelines would a judge or whoever's creating the actual fine? What would they be using to determine that?
I think it's gonna, I think the chief was alluding to this. I think it's gonna depend on the circumstances. You know, if, if the officer, and I see this in court, if, you know, there was a, there's a difference between running a stop sign in front of an officer and then running a stop, stop sign such that there was almost an accident. You know, if that person goes to trial, goes before the judge, there's some, you know, kind of aggravating circumstances. And that might, you know, go up closer to the two hundred dollars. Because they've, they've got discretion. And I think, in my opinion, you want that both from the prosecutor's standpoint and the judge's standpoint.
As in, I mean, he would have to determine, determine intent. You deliberately did that if that hurt somebody.
Well, no, no, you don't. You, you just look at the whole circumstances. And I'm not saying that's gonna happen every time. Both judges over there do establish fees as, as they have authority to do. And I don't know what they'll do here. I imagine they'll do the range and they'll probably start at the hundred dollars for, for a violation that comes in and, and the person just pleads, pleads out.
What's involved in making a ballot, a ballot choice? What's involved in that? Obviously time, but what, what all, it takes place to put it on, to make it a ballot choice instead of?
In other words, if the citizens want it.
A referendum?
Yeah.
I mean, it's been on the books, September, October, November, December, January, February. That's all the information, that's all the data we have on the state law. And then I realize that you said it's very difficult to enforce. Very few other cities have, have done the total hands-free. I can see in big cities. We're not a type of city where if you have a traffic jam, you have to call in emergency. I don't think that's a valid thing. Did you want to speak, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I did, because I remember the pictures from a texting violation, if you will, that killed, where the young man in the pickup truck killed, what, four or six people in the bus just south of town here, not very far away. That could have happened in Kerrville, in our city.
Yeah, texting is already illegal by the state. This is so long.
All of the rest of these things that could, could cause an accident of that nature, I'm in favor of saying they're certainly against the law.
Me too. I'm not scared of being a nanny state. This is a new kind of danger that's only emerged in the past five or 10 years. And, and we see more and more that it really is a serious distraction to people. We're used to listening to music while we drive, talking to somebody else in the other seat while we drive. But this is different. It really, you're fooling yourself if you think you're not distracted. You are. And it's not fair to the other people on the road.
Mr. Ferguson, do you want to speak again? It keeps popping up here.
Well.
It doesn't go away.
It took a long time before I got recognized.
Yeah. He's still trying to get that first vote in.
It's still on there, so. Okay, go on. Thank you. Anybody wish to speak from the audience? Ms. Litskin, if you'll approach, please.
My husband and I are walkers and we walk a lot on the streets. We were almost hit on Bob White one day walking because a person was on a cell phone. And I don't think she ever saw us till we were leaping into a yard with the dogs. The other night, we were driving down a street and there was a Jeep with these big wheels. And he wasn't even in his lane of traffic. He was moving, you know, in front of us. And I don't know what, that it was a cell phone. I can't say that. But he was definitely fiddling with something in the car and was driving down the oncoming lane of traffic. And we, a car came and we thought, well, surely he's gonna move back into his lane. He did not, and the other car had to take evasive action. But like I said.
What age person do you know? Could you tell?
Pardon?
Could you tell what age person?
No, no.
Just because you were behind the bush after you jumped in, right?
I was, I was wondering if, if, if there could be a, some kind of a restriction age-wise, you know, until a driver is mature. I don't know.
I think the neurologists that have done studies on this will tell you that it's the fact, it isn't just the physically holding of the cell phone that is the distraction that when they get so wrapped up in the conversation, or especially if they're texting, they, they no longer see what their environment is.
Texting, yes, we understand that.
Yeah, but anyway. And I don't know how many of you remember the tragedy in San Antonio a few years back when the woman was on the cell phone and hit the mother with the baby carriage. And her daughter, she had just put her other daughter on the school bus, and it killed the mother. And I don't know if the mother was able to shove the carriage out of the way. They don't know. Or if the car also booted the carriage. Fortunately, the baby in that car seat in the carriage was okay. But that, the woman who was killed happened to have been a very good friend of our daughter-in-law. So.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll move approval of this ordinance on the first reading. Oh, sorry.
Mario Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan. I kind of provide IT services, so I may be biased in that. But, you know, I think there's distractions in anything. I mean, one of the things that when we taught Roman when he was gonna start driving was the fact that you get in that car, that's a weapon. There's been people who've gone to prison just for driving a car. And I told him that he has to be very aware of that, that he can hurt somebody else. And we raised him that way. And he's a very good driver. But at the same time, I can imagine right now, all the distractions. People have children in their back seats and people who are eating and everything else. And I leave more to the fact that I think in the community, it probably should be a vote, that we should decide that rather than it being something that we think that, whether even the police force that mandated. I mean, I've even seen police officers who, you can see it, they're on their cell phone too. And then they have these huge displays or the laptops and everything. And it could be a distraction as well with them too. And I mean, where, where is this all gonna end? And so I would prefer, I think, we'd put it, exactly what the mayor was saying, is that let's go ahead and put it to the citizens. Let's make it, I mean, I'm willing to say if all the citizens here are gonna say, well, we all lean sixty to forty that it should be something that should be an ordinance. And I'd honor that. But if we are the opposite of that, and then you gotta put in the fact also that some of us are also probably biased towards technology. You know, me being probably the opposite and others who are like, I don't even know how to do that stuff works. So thank you for the time.
Just one last thing. Mr. McDaniel, how would that work? Is it possible to do such a thing in November?
We just have to look at it and see, attorney and I can check it out between now and the next reading, unless you all just want to table it until you have an answer.
To see if it would be possible.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to make the May election, for example.
Right.
So if you, if you were to, is, can the council initiate that? Do the citizens have to initiate that? I, I'm not, each city's different, so I'm not familiar with how it works here.
Can you have a weigh-in on that, how that would work?
I, I'm not sure, but when you said on election, you have to, one, you have to go through the process. And then, two, you have to determine the subject matter. And so I'd have to research that and see if this is an appropriate subject to even put to the voters.
City matters couldn't go on the November ballot, could they?
I'm not sure. I mean, they've tightened that certainly in the last few years. So that's something else we have to look at.
Charter review, I thought those kind of things could. Did they change that?
Yes, the state has over the last few years.
Okay. Chief, let me ask you one thing. Do you, do you think this is a safety and a health hazard?
I do. I've, I've actually worked accidents where individuals were on the cell phone, talking, and have caused serious bodily injury to individuals that were in other vehicles or bicycles.
Okay. That's, that's basically what I want to hear. If your, if our chief law enforcement officer thinks it's a safety hazard, I think that's important. We have a motion to approve on first reading. Do we have a second? Did you make the motion?
Yes. No, 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 I seconded. You may, you move.
We have a motion and we have a second. Place your votes. Motion carries four to zero. Okay, item number six eight. Ordinance number two oh one eight dash one oh amending chapter one oh two traffic and vehicles. Article four, operation of vehicles, division one generally, by adding a new section one oh two. Oops, we just did that. Sorry, we just did that. See if y'all pay attention. Approving a tariff authorizing an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process defined by section one oh four dash three oh one of the Texas Utilities Code negotiated between Atmos Energy Mid-Tex Division and the Steering Committee of Cities served by Atmos. Mr. Hayes, are there anything in addition? This is our second reading.
No, ma'am, there's not. Ordinance has not been changed. I think the ordinance spells out exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then I think you saw my note earlier this week, hopefully that Atmos will come back this year with a.
By the way, that's pertaining to Atmos for you.
Okay. And they'll come back, probably file for a rate increase in April. And so that ordinance will come back, for those of you that are still here, in probably summer, late summer. And so I recommend approval on second reading.
Are any questions by council or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve on second reading.
I move approval on second reading.
A second?
Do we have a motion second?
Okay, now I can't get my vote in. Oh, there it went.
Motion carries four to zero. Ordinance number two oh one eight dash oh nine amending chapter ten alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Kerrville, Texas by amending section ten dash three licensing. by amending section ten dash three licensing requirements and fees by reducing the applicable fee for alcoholic beverage licenses containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for an effective date ordering publication and providing other matters related to the subject. This is second reading. Did you have any to add? I believe this was your proposal.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just read what I wrote, somewhat brief. I've got no, I'm not recommending any changes from the prior discussion on the first reading. However, I'd, I'd like to clarify once again what it, what this is and what it is not. The alcohol beverage fee has always been simply a sin tax unrelated to any service provided by the city, where the apparent sin in this case is the sale of alcoholic beverages. It's neither an incentive nor really a deterrent for alcohol sales. Prior to this amendment, the range of allowable fees collected by the city could range from as low as twelve dollars and fifty cents all the way up to thirty-five hundred dollars. It just depends on the TABC license that that establishment might hold and is somewhat arbitrary in its application. This proposal that we have in front of us reduces the relative subjectivity and makes this fee more fair and equitable for all sellers of alcohol by squeezing that range of fees by establishing a maximum fee charged of five hundred dollars. The result is not raise the fee on any alcohol seller and still reserves the largest discount over previous fee schedule, the largest discount of a thousand dollars for the intended target of breweries, distilleries, and brew pubs. And that's pretty much what I have to say. So I would be suggesting we pass it on second reading.
Did you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
I do. I'm, I'm still confused about how nobody's permit is going up.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
The ones listed on this list are some of them one hundred and seventy-five.
Right, they are not going up to five hundred. The way it's, the way it's worded is they will pay that fee that they already normally pay or five hundred dollars, whichever is less.
Is lower.
So in those cases, they'd pay one seventy-five. On that list that you just held up, the only people-
And what happens, and what happens to the craft agriculture-related businesses like-
Okay, like a winery.
Or a winery.
Okay, a winery is, is already paying, I think, seventy-five dollars. So theirs doesn't go up either. The brew pubs and breweries, if you, if you're, I mean, see this as a correction, not an amendment. This is, this is a, what we did in January, I see as a mistake that's being corrected. Okay, but prior to the January amendment that we passed, brew pubs and breweries were paying fifteen hundred dollars. They would now pay five hundred dollars. So theirs is going down by the most of anybody.
But if we're, if we're, and we are, we want to encourage this kind of business.
Okay.
Why would we charge them more than we said we were going to in January?
For the simple reason, like I said, that doing what we did in January was somewhat arbitrary and less equitable, to use your word from the last meeting, to, because it's leapfrogging somebody. It's got noth- nothing to do, this fee has nothing to do with their business. It has to do with selling alcohol, period.
Right, but, but if we say as a matter of business support, encouragement, that, that we're very interested in getting into the craft agriculture business, olive oil, wineries, breweries, and it's, we see that in our future for economic development.
Okay.
And so, we're going to adjust the permit for such businesses to be much less than it otherwise would be. That, that makes perfect sense to me.
Right.
And I thought that was the intent of changing back in January. So I don't know why we need to go up.
Okay, a couple of things. One, the wineries and the olive oil industries will not be affected by this either way. Not a, not a bit. Because a winery, the craft agriculture, the wine trail, is, is already paying a small fee.
What about breweries?
Breweries are being reduced from fifteen hundred-
Fifteen to five hundred.
To five hundred, which is the largest discount we're giving anybody. So that's actually an incentive.
It's just not clear to me why a winery should pay one hundred and seventy-five and a brewery should pay-
Okay, a winery pays seventy-five.
Or seventy-five, and a brewery should pay five hundred.
You're right. You're, you're, what you're talking about is the, the lack of equitable, I mean, the arbitrariness of the, this fee in general. Okay, so-
No, I think I'm talking about your, your proposal of making them pay five hundred.
No, because the winery is still going to pay less than the brewery. So there's no rhyme or reason to that. It's just what we've done. It's got nothing to do with this amendment. That, that was happening before.
But not to the extreme of five hundred dollars.
We, I mean, I, I don't wish to argue over and over, but basically, as I said, we're giving a thousand dollar discount to them. We're not giving any discount to the wineries. If it was up to me, truly, the, the alcohol beverage fee would go away. Because to me, it's, it's just a sin tax money grab and we should be obtained, but, but we're not suggesting that. I'm just saying, we're already giving them a big discount to the targeted industries that we're going after. So why not?
I think our discussion, I recall at the time, and then I'm going to ask for the speaker here, was because we were trying not to single out and be particularly discriminatory.
But we don't have to do that. I mean, we can name the brewers' permits that we want to relieve. We see the states, we, we were always just taking half of what the state charged. We don't see any reason why, from our standpoint, it needs to be so high on breweries and brew pubs. So we adjusted ours down to something more in line with other establishments that serve liquor
Right.
to drink on the premises.
And I think that's when Mr. Ferguson said, well, let's, instead of two hundred, which he initially, George proposed, he said, well, let's agree to five hundred, which would make it more equitable across the board.
I just, I just don't agree that we need to be going up that high.
Okay. It's a few hundred dollars. Mr. Walther, you scheduled to speak?
Thank you. Mayor, Council, Jeremy Walther with Pint and Plob Brewing Company, three thirty-two Clay Street. As a, as a stakeholder that's been involved in this discussion previous to council passing this in January, I'd like to offer my perspective. There's been a lot of confusion on this ordinance. And so I think, I think there's certain things that can be clarified and I'd like to attempt to do that. The original, this discussion isn't just in council. It's happening at county level. It's happening with local groups that deal with economic development, other local businesses, tourism. And so it's a, it's a discussion that's definitely evolved. But in the very beginning, when council passed this ordinance in January, five to zero vote, the intent of that ordinance at the time was to recognize those alcoholic beverage permit holders who are also within the craft agriculture sector. And the reason that council, that that ordinance was, was intended to do that was because that it's widely accepted that those businesses, those businesses that actually create a product and that use that product to connect community members to the product that they're consuming is something that adds vibrancy to a community. And so this gesture that was made by this council in January was saying, hey, we do want to promote more breweries and brew pubs. We do want to promote more distilleries. And it's not, i- it was never intended to favor a single permit holder. It was intended to support a larger sector. And so I understand that the language in that ordinance was confusing and could be interpreted differently than the intent. And I agree that it would be a good idea to possibly clean up that language so that intent, that original intent of that is clarified. But the proposed change to the ordinance that's on the table right now completely eliminates any support for craft agriculture in this gesture. So it's been said that craft breweries, or I'm sorry, brew pubs or brewers' permits are receiving the largest discount. It's actually not true if there was an original mixed beverage permit. So this is any bar that serves liquor decided to come to town. TABC permit for that original, the fee for TABC permit originally would be six thousand dollars under the ordinance previous to January. That means the city would charge three thousand dollars. And so what is on the table right now is reducing that fee from three thousand dollars to five hundred dollars. And so what you're doing is incentivizing any bar, any, any bar that's selling liquor for the first time to come to Kerrville. And that was not the intent at all of the ordinance. There's also benefit in, in the verbiage that is proposed to distribute, I'm sorry, to, to give a pretty big break to distributors as well. To probably more so than even craft breweries. So in other words, this doesn't, this change doesn't really attempt to level the playing field. It attempts to kind of bulldoze everything and take away the power that this council had intended. And so I, I hope that the council can find a more prudent compromise to cleaning up the language and to making sure we're not showing favoritism to, you know, a single business. And it's not an issue of raising it from one seventy-five to five hundred. It's the issue of giving that blanket discount to up to forty-six permit holders that have nothing to do with craft agriculture, that aren't just manufacturing alcohol. They're actually just serving or they're just distributing. And so I hope that council can find that compromise to support those businesses that have the highest potential to add vibrancy to this community.
So you don't want us giving discounts to the other beverage service holders, permit holders?
It's not so much what I want where I'm coming from. I'm trying to honor the original intent of the discussion that led to the revised ordinance back in January. And that intent was to recognize and promote
Yeah.
craft agriculture.
And so rather than one hundred and seventy-five, the, the difference is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. It was discounted from fifteen hundred down to now five hundred, so that's a thousand dollars. And really, there's only, I think, four of y'all. And I'm, I don't really care either way, to tell you the truth. But what we've done for the others in dollars and cents, I know it goes from six thousand to four to thousand to two, three thousand or something.
Yes.
And yeah, we're losing some dollar amounts. I don't know if we've had any feedback from any of those people, have we? From city staff? No.
Let me ask a question, or a couple of questions. So if the idea was to incentivize, and I don't, I, I think, was to incentivize craft agriculture, whether we take it to five hundred or one seventy-five, do we really think that's incentivizing businesses to come here? It's just a gesture, correct? More or less, right? Does that mean?
I mean, I would, I would argue it's a gesture.
Right.
Because-
It's, it's, right.
It's not a significant enough one.
So if, whether or not we gave a discount to anybody else, is that gesture still there for a craft agriculture business? Are we still not giving them the same incentive we were before? Isn't it sort of making us choose to be meaner to somebody else? I don't see how that bulldozes the incentive that we're actually giving to craft agriculture. Whether somebody else gets one or not is, is somewhat irrelevant.
To me, that is, that is the crux of it, though.
But if I'm a business-
What we intended to do was sort of an economic development gesture. Now what we're doing is messing with the whole fee schedule for no apparent reason.
That may be what the stated goal was, but I think everybody in the room understands that that was a myth, that there's no ec- there's no economic development coming out of this fee. I mean, a, a person's going to open a business-
It's, it's a gesture. It's a gesture, just like the tax break was. Sometimes they matter. And I think it, it mattered to the council. That certainly was my motivation, was to say, craft agriculture, we want you. And so here's one little gesture we can do to put-
And we're doing it.
Put our money where our mouth is.
If I can speak on-
And then when we change it to, to, nobody's going to pay more than five hundred dollars, that, that changes the whole motivation to me. I, I don't get why we want to do that.
The effect of that gesture, and to give a real world example, when council voted to reduce Pint and Plob's fee from fifteen hundred dollars to one hundred and seventy-five dollars, we committed to writing a check for thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Kerrville Farmers Market, who is involved also in craft agriculture, who is also involved in increasing the vibrancy of downtown and our community, that nobody would argue is a bad thing. We wrote that check. We didn't just save that money and give it to our investors or, or give ourselves a raise. We wrote that check and gave it back to the community. And so that gesture that city council made inspired another gesture that I think contributed in a real way to this community. And if that gesture can have that effect on one license holder, it can have that effect on another license holder. And it can attract more license holders like that. And that's the kind of momentum that makes this town a better place. So gestures do matter. They're very important.
Could we, George, is there any possibility that we go back and, and change your amendment from last time to something that is tailored to craft agriculture? And then come back to, on the next agenda and say, we want to remodel this whole fee schedule?
I, I think to get what you're talking about-
Can we cart these, these two things?
To get where you're talking about, I think your best bet would be arguably just to vote what we want to vote on this one. And if it fails, then we're right back to the January one. That's, because I, I, for this reason stated, I'm going to vote for this because it's more equitable. It still gives, in my view, the incentive that we were targeting for. And it also, the added bonus is that it basically structures a fee that's arbitrary and makes it less arbitrary, makes it more equitable. That's the reason I would vote for this. Now, I don't know that we have to, I don't have to convince you to vote for it. That's just the way I'm going to vote and why. So I, I think that's kind of where it is.
So you, you would not be open to the compromise of going back to the original-
By voting this down, we would go back to the original.
Well, I mean, but, I know, I, but just, just hear me out. Would you be willing to substitute for the amendment you offered last time? An amendment that names the brewer's permit, the brewer's self-distribu- distribution permit, the brew, brew pub license, the winery permit, the distillers and rectifiers permit, the manufacturers license and the manufacturers. So we would be getting the specificity you were after. We were, we'd be broadening the category, but it would be logical because what we're trying to do is offer a gesture of craft agriculture.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Then another time, we can talk about the whole schedule.
As far as this one goes, I don't think we can actually do that, can we? Can we amend this thing that much off of a second reading? And I would take exception to it being more or less logical. I think that was a little bit strange. But anyways, are we even allowed to do that?
Well, a- anytime you, you know, obviously, we've got two readings of an ordinance. It ought to be the same ordinance to give people fair notice. And so anytime you do that, you run the risk that someone's going to challenge that.
And I, I would agree with Ms. Summerlin's motion or suggestion maybe to table this. We seem to be so far apart here. And to be real honest with you, Jeremy, when we first considered this, it seemed like a simple thing to do. And I didn't have any idea. We had forty-six different kinds of permits and I didn't know what TABC did. And that's a staff thing. That didn't have anything really to do with us. So we're just now educating ourselves. I didn't hear back from you. I called you twice. You had referred to me. I, I didn't hear back from you. I, I would like to table it, start this over, see what we're really talking about. I, I see a pretty big impasse at this point and pretty big amendments. What do you think, Ms. Ferguson? I don't think you've weighed in on this.
Well, I, I think that's, one solution is to, to go back somewhere near to go and look again at what we really want to do, whether it is devise a tax bill or a tax that applies to a large number of entities, some of which seem quite different to me. A business, let's talk about a chain restaurant that serves alcohol and has, you know, fifty or seventy-five stores in Texas. They, they think about things in one order of magnitude. And craft agriculture, to me, thinks in a wholly different agri- thought process. And they're looking to do- And they're looking to do something else. And I think they do contribute a vibrancy to the community. I enjoy going there from time to time. And I think that, that they, they are willing to pay a reasonable and rational amount of money. So I'd, I'd like to see it, take a serious look at it collectively with a couple of people off the council and, and the staff to try to see if we can't figure out something that, that doesn't disadvantage anybody. George says it, it, it's equal for everybody. I, I don't quite see it that way. And I think there are some that are disadvantaged, but would be disadvantaged if we just passed this.
Rather than tabling, can we just dispense with it? Because if we're, if we're going to rework it, just get it off the.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'm not going to make that motion, but that's what my suggestion would be, rather than tabling it. If you want it, vote it down. Somebody make a motion to deny it. Or I'll just make a motion to pass it. If it gets without a second, it fails, right?
Okay.
There you go. I make a motion to pass it as is.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I hear no seconds, so this will fail on second reading from lack of a second. And at this point, we could perhaps, would it be appropriate to direct some conversation? Let's say more from Mr. Broody and maybe Ms. Steph to educate ourselves a little better. We could do it on a workshop so we don't keep the people forever doing this. We could, is there a way to put that on our workshop? We've already posted the agenda for that.
We could. Or you could have two, a committee of two like you do on many things and they can bring back a recommendation.
Would, would you like to do that? Would you two like to do that?
I'm, I'm going to be gone for the next two weeks.
Okay.
Which would cause a little bit of a delay.
How about Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Broody? Would you be willing to do that?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Who would even ask you to raise your hand?
Moving, moving right along.
Just put your hand up, Warren. Just put your hand up, there you go.
Okay.
Shucks. I was better off when I didn't have a, the system didn't work.
Item number 78, resolution number 16 dash, oh, thank you, Jeremy, I'm sorry. Thank you for speaking. Resolution number 16 dash 2018, authorizing the waiver of various fees, authorizing a non-exclusive license and funding agreement regarding the city's downtown pavilion for the Kerrville Farmers Market to be held in downtown Kerrville each Friday between April and October. Ms. Foles.
Let me begin again. Back in September, council considered a draft agreement and passed a resolution waiving associated fees with this event. Tonight, before you, is a near draft. And there's one thing that we're going to ask you to consider, consider for an amendment for this tonight. And that'll be addressing alcohol. It was an oversight on our behalf. Alcohol is not currently allowed at the Boardwalk Pavilion unless you have a written agreement from us or a permit. And so that's something that we're going to ask for you to amend and then approve tonight. Due to its success, the Farmers Market is moving to a weekly market. It's going to be held weekly, every Friday from April to October. And then after that, it'll be back to a monthly market downtown. So in addition, one of the other changes to this agreement here tonight is the market is requesting a cash sponsorship from the city in the amount of $3,000. It'll be paid in two installments of $1,500 apiece. And as a reminder, here are the deal points for this agreement. Waiving the associated fees for the pavilion, use of our existing tents and tables if they wish to do so. Insist with in-kind marketing, such as putting them in our activity guide, listing them on our website. Contribute to half the cost for the downtown lamppost banners, not exceed $250, which we already did. And provide barricades, access to electricity, and keep the downtown restrooms open for the events. So, so the new item would be allowing alcohol use officially and also providing the sponsorship as well. And with that, we approve, we recommend that you approve this agreement and resolution with the amendment as presented.
Okay, I actually have something to say that's a modification to this. I've already discussed this with Ms. Graham for the Farmers Market, but proposal in front of us contains a clause whereby the city would be asked to sponsor it for $3,000. I've been contacted by a private donor who wishes to remain anonymous, who's offering to fund the same $3,000. So in the same schedule as the city was going to do, which was basically half of it by April 1st, half of it by the end of September. So with that, my suggestion would, would be to modify the agreement to pull section two, just pull section two out. And then there's that part in section five discussing a reimbursement to the city if the Farmers Market was to terminate early. The donor is not looking to recall money. So that could come out. And the rest of the agreement would be as is, just changing the, pulling the city out of the funding of that.
This looks like this is a pretty firm commitment.
It is.
It is, okay.
Yes. So I don't know how that goes forward, but that's basically.
Should you say something in there about through a grant funds or just trust? Is that, I guess, okay with the Farmers Market people?
I contacted them and at the time, they were okay with it. Yes?
I think, yeah, I'll stand up here. Justin Graham, 542 Kelly Street, Centerpoint, Texas. My wife Katie behind me. We are owners and operators of Zansenberg Farm and the directors of the Kerrville Farmers Market. Regarding the funding, I would encourage the city to continue to support this, but encourage also the, any donors. We welcome that with grace and thanks due to God. The, really in our perspective is to encourage this as a city, as an entity downtown for the enrichment that was previously visited on the previous agenda here. But to continue to embrace that and support it, both as, as sponsors and with, with equipment, with the fees, that it, that it may continue to grow and become something that this city is proud of and is behind and has credit to. And that's, regarding that comment, that's all I have as far as on that. But I, I would continue briefly just to say that since we began this as the first Friday event in October, you know, it's, it has added value. We have added a lot of encouragement and a lot of positive rapport from the community and local business owners. And so we don't want to stop that momentum too early. We would like to see it continue to grow at least through the first year, or first year of completion.
I understand you to be saying you could find other uses for the $3,000 from the donor?
Absolutely, ma'am. That's, and I would encourage donors that would want to remain anonymous to be identified as we are in a sole proprietorship status now. We seek this to become more of a nonprofit organization with growing influence educationally for youth. It's, you know, agriculture and the creativity that is involved there. And I think that's one of the words that we're looking for here is the originality for the community and to keep that originality and encourage that originality and to educate it and to nurture it. And that's really, I think, where we, where we stand as, as individuals. There's a, there's a way that seems right and, and in the end, sometimes that's, it's not the right way. And we're, we're seeking to do that and to encourage that from the, from the perspective of alcohol, from agriculture, but also the enrichment of our youth and our community.
Would, would it be acceptable then to do it this way? The original ask was for $3,000. Would it not be okay then to take the first $3,000 from the donor? And if in fact, you've got secondary budget requests that come up, then you return to the city rather than take the ask from the city as well as the donor right up front? You know what I'm saying? Would that be an acceptable option? Because, well, just that.
Understood, point taken. I think really what we're seeking is to continue that relationship and that stability that we've.
With the city?
Yes.
Right, which the, I think the rest of the agreement pretty well signifies that support. And I, I think the reason the donor's even coming forward is because that support is there. And the, the intent is of course to continue to have it grow, not just grow as a Farmers Market, but grow in the downtown area, which is going to require city support to occur. And so again, I would just, you know, seems like it would, just creating the opportunity to come back later would be still out there always. And it would, I think it would look better if you took the donor's money in replacement and come back later, you know?
Yeah, I, I would welcome that, of course, we're, we're encouraging.
If I could, maybe we could propose doing that in the beginning initially through the donor who came forward to do this on behalf of the city. And then maybe we could escrow that small amount. The term ends December 31st, 2018. We could see how things go. We'd have that in escrow going forward. I noticed also the city will be providing electricity, waivers of all permit, health fees, you know, monetarily.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is, we're happy to do. Would that work for you if we just kind of put that in an escrow account?
Absolutely.
We could reexamine it in December.
I'll go. Yeah, you wouldn't really have to put an escrow account. In fact, I, I have authority to contract for the $3,000 without y'all having to be involved. But if you want to, then we can bring it back if, if the event they do come back and ask for.
What is that account? It's coming out?
It's contingency.
Contingency. And let me ask while we're just looking, item number six, is there any addressing actually about pets? I mean, I don't know, I know we do in the parks.
I wonder what's wrong with my request?
If these things, I'm sorry.
I've got a speaker request in.
Okay, your next word.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the city's $3,000 being the first in because I think that it's important for it to be a part of those things that the city is doing. And I'm not particularly in favor of unnamed folks getting involved, as George suggested. I understand there are some times when that's an appropriate thing, but I much prefer to know who I'm dealing with and would think that, that it's clearly a better way to go is to go with the cities being the first $3,000. And if that, if somebody else does then want to put $3,000 up and they can make an arrangement with the folks running the, the event and get along with the city, then that's great. But I think the city ought to have the call on that.
By the way, we did get a million dollar building from an unnamed donor.
Yeah.
We took it.
Well, sure.
Okay. Any comment? Are you ready for my question?
Yes, ma'am.
So on item number six, do we address anything about pets? I don't know if we have anything in the parks or is that?
For the Boardwalk Pavilion specifically, pets are allowed. They just need to be on a leash.
Okay, and D, license, D shall not permit smoking. Do we say or vaping to be consistent with the parks?
The language is, is not in the agreement, but that's understood as well because it's part of our ordinance, cigarettes and vaping.
Any other questions or comments? Jeremy, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please.
I have a, sorry. Jeremy Walter, 332 Clay Street. I have a written statement in support of, of the Farmers Market, if I may read it. Pint and Plow began our involvement as a supporter and vendor at the Kerrville Farmers Market. It's beginning in October 2017. And as a local business, we fully support the Kerrville Farmers Market and its contribution to the vision statement of the city's Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan, which reads, Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming and inclusive community that one respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it. Two, seeks to attract economic growth and development. Three, provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages. And four, does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community. After only six monthly markets, the Kerrville Farmers Market has added vibrancy to the downtown area, utilizing a city resource in the Boardwalk Pavilion, overlooking Louise Hayes Park and our beautiful section of the Guadalupe River. The brewery has enjoyed a surge of new business driven by the market, where new customers were introduced to Kerrville-made beer and chose to extend their evening in the downtown area by visiting us for dinner, adding to our daily revenue, revenue and city sales tax collections. Other market-goers have made the market their routine happy hour kickoff to a Friday night in downtown Kerrville, where they continue the evening to enjoy maybe fried oysters and a jalapeno moonshine cocktail at Popo's, a steak and a bottle of wine at Francisco's right across the street, crackeroni and kale salad maybe, a grape juice, a coffee and a snack at Pax's maybe, or a top shelf bourbon and live jazz music at Azul, all within two blocks and walking distance from the Kerrville Farmers Market. As vendors, we have witnessed community gather at the Farmers Market to purchase artisan bread, cheese, meat, fresh produce, and ready-made natural foods and enjoy each other's company with local live music and the sounds of the river flowing over the dam in the background, right in the middle of historic downtown Kerrville. And it's these kinds of regular events that celebrate the taste of our town and preserve and promote the roots that anchor this community. It's these kind of organizations that contribute in real and lasting ways to the vision statement of Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan and that make this town worth living in. And so we strongly support the Kerrville Farmers Market. We strongly encourage city council to also continue supporting the Farmers Market. I could speak for the Farmers Market and for Katie and Justin as two people that have a lot of energy and a big vision for this market. And their request to city staff for this new proposal was very prudent. And they wanted to be able to back up their, what they asked for with very real tangible reasons. An extra $3,000 is only going to allow them to do much more than they're currently doing. They weren't, they didn't want to get greedy. They have a, a big vision. Justin has talked about extending the offering of the market to add possibly an art walk potentially, figuring out ways to better engage with those downtown businesses, opening their doors perhaps a little bit later, encouraging those market-goers to come into their business. So this, this market and the directors behind it have a, have a really big vision for it and they could use all the help they can get. And my only concern with, with tabling the $3,000 is it's one thing if that's kind of a guarantee when they, when they need it, but is there a possibility for that $3,000 to go away? Staff is willing to contribute that, they are comfortable with that. As long as the market can access that to, to pursue their vision, then, then I think it is, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there is a dollar amount too, and we're happy to do it. I, I speak for myself, we'll see. For, I don't, 20 licenses and electricity and there's a labor to put the pole banners up and down. So there's a dollar value that the city's offering to you for that too. And I think it'll all be well worth it. I've heard great things about it. So any other comments, questions? I would entertain a motion on resolution number 16 dash 2018. So moved.
I pushed motion and I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry, nothing is showing up on here.
I know, I just pushed it. I'd like to make the motion that I suggested. And if I have to, I'll name the donor if that helps you, Mr. Ferguson. Would that change anything?
Well, no, I, well, yes, it would change something, but I, I still think that the city ought to be the first $3,000. I think that's essential.
Isn't it, is it most important that we just, that they're supported, correct? And supported in the way that they ask?
Yeah, but.
And would it not be nice if it was community-supported?
I think it's going to be of great value that they have city support.
They have that. And I'm, I'm only asking because.
Then let's give them the first $3,000. And it's, it's not giving it to them all at one time. It's giving it, it, it twice. And if, if they messed up with the first 1,500, then you could, you could sit down and think about what's wrong and, and find a way to fix it. I think that's a, a good thing to have that call in there at halfway to somewhere. If, and if it's all going. If, and if it's all going smooth, it'll be obvious to everybody.
Before I make the motion, this is an off-the-wall question. Are we allowed to, um, am I allowed to discuss something with council back if we haven't presented it as an executive session thing? I have to discuss something and is that possible? Am I, am I allowed to make?
A legal opinion on this particular agenda item?
It's not a legal opinion, it's a, I don't.
It's got to meet one of the requirements of the, it's got to be, meet one of the requirements of the exceptions of state law.
All right, well then I'll just say it. The private donor is me, okay? And the, part of the reason I was suggesting it was because it seemed to me that the better thing for a farmer's market, rather than just have the city fund it, would be community support. I, like probably just about everybody in this room and everywhere else, is really behind the, the farmer's market. So, the idea was twofold. One, it wasn't something that I just whimsically thought up, it was a, a prayered thing. And it seemed to me, they needed, they were asking the money, I happen to have it, and the city is supporting this farmer's market by all the other things that the city is doing. And if it also makes it so that community events are supported by the community when possible, whenever possible, I feel like we should do that rather than always go to the city. The city will back it. I guarantee you that if it, if it comes back and there's momentum still going, that in six months, they've got the same sort of stuff showing and they're going to ask for it, city's going to back that. I don't think there's any doubt about that because there's enough of a, a positive buzz coming from the farmer's market being in the downtown and everything else about it. So, having said that, I would, I would really like to make my motion be that the contract is modified to be, just because not everybody's going to watch the meeting, it still would be nice if the contract didn't say who it was. But just, it doesn't even have to say it, I guess. Just pull it out and, and pull out the, the, the section five part that says that there's a reimbursement clause to it because there's none of that.
Mr. Rudy?
Go ahead.
I would second that and I think that's a beautiful gesture on your part.
So.
Because I know it's not easy. And I think, I agree with him that there is tremendous support and would be ongoing.
May I just ask if you can add to the motion the inclusion of alcohol?
Oh, just say that?
The authority to serve and not.
Okay, so.
With the amendment.
Pass the resolution 16, 2018 with the amendments I just spoke of and plus allowing for alcohol to be served? Is that what I'm saying? Okay. All right.
And I would second that.
Could those be two separate amendments?
They, they can be. I mean, I'm not sure, okay.
Could we do that, that one first?
To amend it to allow alcohol? Okay?
Okay.
It's removed and seconded?
I'm not getting the voting box. Is anybody else?
I don't have a vote box.
You don't have a, you don't have a second?
I, I just seconded.
Okay, I don't show anything?
There we go.
Motion carries four to zero.
And then the motion that George's contribution be substituted for the city's amendment?
Oh, I thought that's what I, I thought that's what I just did.
No, you did the alcohol.
I did?
Yes.
I thought I pulled that part out. Okay. Well.
So now you're, you would like to amend to withdraw.
So the first one, just, just added alcohol? That's all I did?
Correct.
That's what came up on the screen.
Okay, so I'm making another motion where the, the $3,000 clause, section two, gets pulled out with the understanding that, can I, can I just say private donor so that the minutes show that? Okay.
That, that won't be in the.
Right, correct, correct. Yeah, we're just, I'm making a motion to take out the section two about the $3,000 from the city as well as the second part of section five, it may be the whole section five, I don't know, the part about the reimbursement aspect of it, pull that out. So that's my motion, right?
And he shook his head yes.
Okay.
The applicant here, so I would second that. So we have.
And I, I thank you too, George. Very good thing to do, but I still think the city ought to put in the first $3,000 like you said.
Okay. So the motion fails two to two. So we left standing with the alcohol provision and?
And to adopt as presented, right?
Now, what, where would it put you?
What I would do is, since this is set up, the authority is set up in the resolution, go ahead and adopt the resolution as presented with the changes, with the amendment made.
The alcohol, right. So I'd like to make that motion.
Yeah, now, what is the motion?
The original motion. With the addition.
In entirety, it's entirety.
Right, with the addition of the alcohol permission.
Okay, but no comment about the $3,000. Okay. Well, I'll second that.
What was the first motion?
What did we do in the first motion?
We just voted to amend to allow alcohol sales.
Yes, in the agreement.
So in that, did we not already then pass the full agreement with the alcohol added when we passed that first motion?
Yes, we would have.
I, you know, Council, Brett and I are just trying to track what you all are doing.
I know.
And I think that you all wanted to deal with the alcohol authority and then the contribution.
And those are little amendments to the main motion. Now we're ready for the main motion.
To the agreement and so now, what I would recommend you do is adopt the or, the resolution which grants the authority for the city manager to sign the agreement.
But what he's saying is now, as it stands now, because we divided it, now we have obviously something that's approved for alcohol sales and if you have another situation as we had earlier, it, that will pass with everything that's in here and the other will not.
That's my motion.
So let's go back to the very beginning because that is, that was not clear from, from what you've described to us. What we've done is, was not our intent.
Well, then I'm, I'm completely missing your intent.
Okay, then let's go back. Let's go back to the original and vote again, a revote on his motion. We've not voted on this one.
I got to tell you, it's never been this hard to give money away.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that's right.
And nobody wants to stop you. Just don't want to substitute for the city's money.
It sure feels like I'm being stopped.
No, no, I encourage you.
I encourage you.
Well, then encourage me to pass the motion that I suggested.
No.
No.
Because the city needs to.
The city needs to be the first.
Okay, then we have a motion to.
Wow.
Now, what, what are we voting on this time? Because I may not make that motion.
Okay, this, this is where I see you all have done. You've changed the, you, you had two amendments to the agreement. One was the alcohol authority, one was the contribution. Contribution failed, so you have an amended agreement. What I would recommend you do if you want to, again, support farmer's market is adopt the resolution as presented with the change to the non-exclusive license and funding agreement.
And that's the motion I think I just made in.
I, I thought, I thought that's what you made, right?
And Warren seconded.
Then I'll second that.
They're adopting the resolution. I mean, you all, this is your meeting, this is your motion.
Yes, and what it, what you did was advise us in a way that it, it will make it impossible to do what George would like to do. So, that having been said, George, I'm just going to thank you again and we're going to move forward in this. So we have a motion and we have a second, scheming as it was. Okay.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, mayor. By all means, if you all want to redo this.
This, this resolution.
Right. The, the res, remember the resolution does two things. If you look at section two, it, one, it takes care of the fees because that doesn't, that doesn't go in the agreement. You haven't done that yet.
Yes.
So then, then, and then you made two separate, you tried to make two separate amendments to the agreement, one of which passed, one of which failed on a two to two vote. So, in, in the way I'm thinking is you all need to deal with the resolution, which again will waive the fees and then finally adopt.
We, we voted on the, the, the resolution as amended. That was your motion, right?
Right. amended with the alcohol part.
That's right, which is all we have on the table and all we can have on the table at this point. Okay. And if we don't do the resolution, if we don't pass this, then there is no resolution. Okay, I got it. There's a motion and a second.
So if I vote, if I vote this down and it doesn't pass, what do we do?
You just do what you were going to do, George.
But voting against this also votes against the whole agreement.
Everything, the whole agreement, which is exactly right. Or you could bring it back.
Yeah.
So that's where we are.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Vincent would vote for it in a heartbeat.
Okay, we have a motion and I still show that there's no second.
I don't see a motion punched.
I don't see motion pushed either.
Because I'm not really sure what your motion is.
Thank you.
To pass it as amended.
I have, I have, the motion on the floor that I have right now is to approve the resolution as presented. And I have that Mr. Rudy made that motion and that the mayor seconded it. Is that not correct?
No.
No.
Okay, then I'm going to cancel that one. Can we just have a new motion, please?
Have we passed anything on this agenda?
Yes, we did. Just to move the amendment from the protocol.
I'll move approval of resolution number 16 dash 2018.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Carries three to one and George, I still appreciate it. Sorry it turned out that way, we should not have done that originally, but we did. Okay. Item number 8A, and I'm sorry if it demeans any of your glory, because we hope that you're very successful. Okay, 8A is appointments to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm going to ask council to defer this upon the request. According to rule 3.4 from Mr. Vogel, he would like to be present to vote on this. Do I have a consensus to defer to the next meeting?
Sure.
We have time. All right? Then, item number 8B is appointment to the Recovery Community Coalition and I believe Ms. Summerlin, you were on the.
Yes, ma'am. And I would like to move that Leigh Anne Fitzpatrick, the superintendent of the State Hospital, be appointed to the Recovery Community Coalition.
And I believe that the interview team did get together on that.
Absolutely. The only thing that held it up last time, we were missing half of her application.
Right, I remember that, all right? We have a motion, we have a second. I'll second it. Motion is second to approve. All right, passes four to zero. Item number 8C is appointment to the mayor's youth advisory council and Ms. Craig?
We have one term that is due to expire May 31st, 2018 to replace a non-voting, not a, non-attending member. And Mayor White requested that the appointment be placed on this agenda.
Okay, just to clarify, actually Jonathan Trailer, who was appointed on the original council, notified us that he was not going to be able to serve and we moved up an alternate who is the listed member here, Aiden Smith, who attended one meeting and then never was able to attend another meeting and we have not been able to hear a response from him. Tried to contact him a number of times. So, we have one application on file to fill that one open position. And let me say that although we just have a couple of months left in the year, the council, the youth council has voted to do special meetings, so every other week they are having meetings. And so the applicant that we have is Kayla Buck. I would recommend that she be nominated for the committee. I do have letter of recommendation. I have interviewed her and I think she would be an excellent member, so does the youth council. So I would move that we appoint Kayla Buck second. We have a motion, second?
Now it is. It wasn't lit up on the screen.
Motion carries four to zero. Very good. Item number nine is city manager's report. Are you ready?
Yes, mayor and council. First of all, while EA is passing around the monthly CIP report, I do want to recognize that this is Sandra Yarborough's last official city council meeting after 34 years and half of her life with the city.
Don't give it away.
She is going to have a very honorable retirement and so I've asked her to come back, if she will, with her family to your next meeting and be appropriately honored. So, we also have an event, employee event, I think all of you have been invited to later this month that will also be honoring Sandra, so we thank her for her service.
Yes.
And we'll do it again next meeting.
Yes, we will.
Okay. Also, I know a new council will be seated in May, but I just wanted to go ahead and put this on your radar, that we are looking at the idea of another annual retreat. Last year I think was very helpful and so again, at the end of May, we'll be looking at planning for another retreat. So just kind of be aware of that. And then finally, with this capital improvement report, want to highlight a few items. On the left of your sheet there, your, your matrix, you'll see a, a number and that's what I'll refer to to make it a little easier. So number four, the Legion Lift Station, just want to make you aware that we are exploring funding through the Water Development Board and that we're going to be having a resolution on your next agenda to authorize to make that application. And so, we'll have a discussion about funding for that project, not just asking you to pass the resolution. Number eight, reuse distribution mains, the paving for River Hill, we've asked them to move that up to next week, actually, beginning March 19th, they're going to try to schedule that in, weather permitting. And then we're going to be repaving the trenching that occurred on Holdsworth later as well, either in this month or in early April. Sports Complex Reuse Pond, number 11, that we anticipate that the Plains Zoning Commission will actually be considering a replat of the entire sports complex, that either in April or May, we had committed to the council that we would do that after we had the donations of all the land in Playhouse. That's in the works. Number 12, Tennis Center Improvements, EA has suggested and I think is a great idea that your, your workshop for April, we've slated for the tennis center and the golf course and that we might want to have that one onsite at the golf course with the consultant. So, just want to give you a heads up on that. 14, Public Safety Complex feasibility study, we are working on getting that RFP out, we anticipate giving, bringing your recommendation on who to hire for that study in April. And then finally, number 17, the Granular Activated Carbon Bench Top Study, this was an add-on to the actual work being done on TTHC where you can see we're providing third-party review and evaluation of treatment processes including electro-coagulation. So that added some cost to the project, as you can see, the 25,000, and I've already authorized that. So, those are the projects I want to bring your attention to and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those at your leisure.
It's not on this list, but we had talked about it and I'm sure I'm glad the bridge is repainted by Gibson's.
Well, thank you for suggesting it.
Any questions back, council?
No, but I'll, I don't have a question, but I'll tell you, if you want to see a big pile of dirt, they have got one over on the golf course at River Hills and it, it's blocking my view across the fairway and it, it's taken out four houses completely. It's the biggest pile of dirt I have ever seen. And I've seen some bombs go off.
Building the pond, I guess, huh?
Yeah, they're building the pond and man, it's, it's a lot of dirt they got there.
We could have used that on the. We could have used that on the, if we want. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I believe you had some items you would like for us to make a motion, is that right? To go into executive session to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, if you would make a motion, it has to do with economic development, by the way. Council? I'll move that we go into executive session under 551087. Second. Sorry, motion and a second? I skipped number 10, I'm so sorry. Let's back up items for future agenda. Does anyone have any items for future agenda? Sorry, Cheryl. Okay. I'm sorry, it's my, my problem.
Okay, this is actually a pass-through item, it was something from Vincent. "I guess the early returns from the comprehensive plan community input seem to be saying that housing is a limiting factor in our community growth. At a recent workshop, council had come to consensus to pursue an RFP concerning a possible housing development on Loop 534. I'd like to see us follow through on that process on an upcoming agenda item." So, there.
We have noted that. Any others? If not, I apologize, any from the audience? If not, now we will move in, I will make a motion to move into executive session under 551087, Economic Development. Second. We have a second? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries four to zero.
George, you're in favor.
Yes, he is, he just raised his hand. I'm sorry, at 8:12, into executive session. Okay, let the record show that we're back in regular session at 8:34 PM. And also let the record show there was no action taken in executive session. That is all that I have, council, on the agenda. So I will adjourn at 8:34.